Recording of members present and absent.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Here.
Hanson is absent.
Open meeting, compliance statement read.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this meeting was registered in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certified that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place of the agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public field and location of the meeting.
Minister the oath of office to board member, Mr. Larry Parker, seat number five.
I, Larry Parker, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, that I will not knowingly receive direct or indirect any money or any other valuable thing for performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office other than compensation allowed by law. I further swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties as members, as a member of this Board of Education of Alba Independent School District, number one. Subscribe and sworn to me before this sixth day of July 2020.
I think I'll use the assignment here. Hope you sign this one too.
Sign the, sign the life of it here. I'm just, you can just sign right here. I'll fill out the rest of it for you.
Congratulations, Larry. Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you.
Today and everything.
Great day.
Hey. You're a great goal bug. Okay. Action to reorganize the Board of Education, election of officers, president, vice president, clerk, and deputy clerk. Board is now open to nominations for presidents. Well, I would nominate Jay McDermott.
Second.
That train was always just work.
I know.
Do you want to do them all? You want to go and do them all?
Do them all.
Or whatever?
Let's do them all. How does have a motion for vice president? Deputy Slater. I nominate Deputy Slater. Don't, don't. The camera's on stop. And for clerk, any more nominations? So, for clerk.
I nominate Karen.
Dan Carroll. And do we have any nominations for deputy clerk? I nominate Larry Parker. Okay. Now have nominations for president, vice president, clerk, and deputy clerk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All close, same sign. But we have a new group. I was, in all seriousness, I was visiting with someone the other day. I visit with so many people, I can't even remember who I visited with, but I was telling them of all the boards, and I know many of you have served on lots of boards in your lifetime, that this happens to be the very best one that I've ever served on. And I appreciate so much each of you and the way that we have moved forward in the development of Alba Public Schools. So, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you, Mr. Argo, for your leadership. Because without you, our job would be a whole lot harder. So.
Thank you.
What a great bunch you are, and I, it's a privilege to serve with you. We appreciate you, Jay. Thank you. Consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Additions of items of new business to the agenda.
There are none.
Minutes of the June 25th, 2020, regular board meeting. Approval of the finance report. Approval of the activity fund report. Approval of the activity fundraisers, and approval of the booster club sanctioning requests.
So, we'll go back. 7.2, our minutes of the June 25th, 2020 board meeting. I did not see any errors to those minutes. 7.3, our finance report. We have our June investments that are up to date and current through David Manning and the Woods County Treasurer Office. I want to go through our finance. And so, I pulled this up. Let's see if I can make it a little bit bigger. So, I just wanted to point out just a few things from our year-end closing. You can see from our charter rules, our gross production, we've talked about this a lot. We don't really want to harp on it, but almost a million down from year-to-date comparing June 19 to June 20. So, you can see that quite a bit of loss in revenue on our gross production. You looked down our next line, and there was an increase in motor vehicle tax. But, one of the things that we're hearing is that we're probably going to continue to see a decrease in all of these. Now, that's yet to be seen, and we don't know what's going to happen with the economy. But, we are being told that we should expect a decrease in all of these categories. And so, we haven't started that collection of gross production for the new year, but we suspect that in the months of July and August and September is when we're going to see those collections, when oil was next to nothing or nothing during the pandemic. And then, just kind of went through and wanted to provide you with some comparisons from year to year. You can see that payroll costs have increased over the last three years, and part of that teacher pay raise and support increase, which has been a good thing for our employees. Our building fund expenses, I wanted to point that out to you. You can see that this year, though, is pretty low. We had $69,277. And you can expect, when I bring the finance projections for the remainder of this fiscal year, next month, we're going to see an increase in that area as we begin to move some of our building expenses and maintenance over into our building fund. You can, you can see though, from our revenue collection, that we normally, every year, we're collecting about $650,000 in our building fund. So, it's a very healthy fund. Child nutrition, last one I'll talk about just a little bit. Want to talk about payroll there. You can see from FY '18 up to last year, we've seen an increase, and we'll continue to see an increase as we've moved our cooks over into, from general fund into child nutrition fund. And all of their salaries will be paid out of that fund. Look at our history of our fund balance. You can see that Alba Public Schools has done well through your stewardship and superintendents before me. You look at FY '20 and what we project right now for our fund balance is very healthy. It's 6.1, a $3 million carryover in our building fund, and $285,000 in our child nutrition. And those are all very important because, if you've noticed, we continue to eat into that. Because economically, things are slow. We're not collecting like we were. And so, it's really important as we move forward that we begin to be more conservative in our expenditures. And that's one of the things that we hear throughout the state, is to make sure that you're conservative as we move into these uncertain economic times. I provided you a graph there that shows a comparison of revenue and expense for FY '20 and FY '19. It's kind of hard to see because we're on separate pages there, but you can review that. Really similar, not only in our expenses from 2020, but when you look at 2019, very similar in what we've done. The change is in our revenue. And so, we don't have a lot of control over our revenue, but we do over expenses. And so, that part of that decision-making that we'll expect our administrators and myself to be a little more conservative and review those purchase orders when we get up. Any questions about the financial report?
Have we heard any more on the timeline for the wind farm?
No, we have not.
No updates?
I haven't had any update on that. They were approved, but have not heard of any start date or when that would begin. But, I can sure check on that.
No, no, it's, I just wondered if you had heard. I hadn't heard anything either.
No, it's been very quiet. Anything else? Okay, activity fund report. We have our closeout for the year in June, and then our starting of the new fiscal year. All of our activity funds are in very good standing. There are no issues with any of those. 7.5, our activity fundraisers. Mrs. Durkey has done a really good job. I have this one. One of the things that we started doing a few years ago is, we presented these to you in spreadsheet format, and we wanted to track fundraisers that were completed, fundraisers that we had, and fundraisers that we didn't do or no longer. And you can see that the red fundraisers, we have not, are no longer active. And so, you can tell that we've made some, we've made some headway in reducing the amount of fundraisers as you look through that list. And we've reduced that tremendously. One of the things that we have, we have about 116 this year, and that's down from 147, I believe, last year. And some of these are your donations that are activities. They'll complete a request for donation. It could be working concession stand. And so, I appreciate our sponsors really being mindful of that as they completed these this year. 7.6, our booster club sanctioning requests. These are our normal, routine sanctioning requests from all of these organizations. They've all done a good job and been supportive of our students, and I see no reason for them not to be sanctioned. Are there any questions about our activity funds, activity fundraisers, or sanctioning requests? If there are none, I would recommend their approval.
I make motion to read the seven, 7.1 through 7.6 as presented. And thank you for your due diligence, Mr. Argo.
This country is nice.
Mrs. Durkey's done a great job.
Second. Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item eight, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year 21. 8.1, general fund as referenced. 8.2, building fund as referenced. 8.3, child nutrition fund as referenced.
We'll start with 8.1, our building fund. One of the things I want to point out as I begin going through some of these purchase orders is, these are not all expenses. Many of these are open purchase orders. So, when you see a number or an expense, it may not be that's what it costs, that's what we've opened that purchase order up with to start the year. Okay? So, number seven, for sure, number seven, for $13,000, Telecom Holdings. In the past, that's been Beasley phone service, but that's changed. They were bought out, and so, they provide our phone service for us. Purchase order number 11, for $83,865.60, that is with the City of Alba contracting for our SRO. Purchaser number 14, for $33,500, our farm plan. That's just an open purchase order. Purchase order number 21, $18,520 with Mas Inc. So, that covers all of our district financial and accounting software, and all of our student information system software. Purchase order number 32, with Office Solutions, for $21,797.12. That is the, this is the last year of our lease with our comp machines. We mentioned last week, I talked a little bit about purchase order number 42, and our workers' comp premium has gone up, $29,294. Purchase order number 43 is our property and vehicle insurance premium for $138,000. Purchase order number 59, $100,110 for our substitutes. That's an open purchase order to begin the year. It's a little hard to do our comparison from year to year because of our last nine weeks. So, we've run into some difficulty as we're working our way through our finance, trying to make some comparisons, apple to apples, as we've looked at things. Purchase order number 73 and 74, those are textbook adoptions for the middle school and high school, social studies books. Purchase order number 148, educational-based services for $18,000. That is our district psychological service. Any questions about any of our general fund purchases, purchases, encumbrances? Our payroll, the next attachment, go back. This is the payroll for all of our employees that has been encumbered so far.
Is this included benefits?
Yes. Okay, our building fund. Purchase orders number four and five, I think this is really what I wanted to point out to you as far as being open purchase orders. We have $14,000 purchase order to Jekins and Price for supplies, and $8,000 for treats. Now, we haven't spent $22,000 on custodial supplies, but we've opened those in the event that we need to purchase things and get them here quickly. Purchase order number 17, $1280 with Kelly Schlar welding. He's going to get our softball stairs up to the press box, up to code. And then, purchase order number 18, some concrete work around the building at Washington. There's been a leak there. Water leaks into Mrs. Lott ace's rooms, so we're going to get that fixed. Child nutrition fund purchase orders, the largest one there in our child nutrition fund, you can see with Keystone Food Services. That is an open purchase order for $250,000 to get us started working with them. Purchase order number three, Heartland Auto Chlor System. That's our dishwasher maintenance and supplies for that equipment. And then, we also have a separate attachment for our child nutrition payroll, and that is all of the cooks' salaries and benefits. Do you have any questions about our general fund, building fund, or child nutrition fund? There are none, I would recommend their approval.
I make a motion, we approve the purchase order encumbrances referenced in 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3. Seven. Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Hi.
Kane.
Yes.
Superintendents report.
We have one resignation this week to bring to the board from Penn College. She will no longer be coaching our sixth grade girls' basketball. Communications, quite a few things I'd just like to visit with you all about and let you, let you know. First thing I'm going to start with, our art building project and planning for that. We continue to work with our architect and construction manager to make sure that we're within our budget and within our means for what we want to do with the art room. So, that's a slow process, but we are continuing to meet, have a meeting later this week with them to go over some of those numbers and some of the plans. Want to also mention to the board that we have been working really all summer on a return to learning plan, on bringing our students and our teachers and all of our staff back into our buildings. Mr. Slater, the career tech, and myself have met with our local medical professionals, and then also from a regional and state perspective, to get some ideas on what we can do to make sure we have the safest start in beginning the school that we can. And so, we continue to review that plan. We continue to revise it as the situation continues to change. You know, we look to, would like to have something out there in the next few weeks, and we'll continue to work on that, and we will communicate that with you. Next week, I'll be meeting with teachers, support staff, principals, and we're going to review a plan together and get their feedback on some different safety and mitigation standards that we can use on bringing students and teachers back. So, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Kind of going along with that, two years ago, the board embarked on a strategic planning process. And so, that is something we're pausing right now. And it's a, it was a large investment, and an investment that we believe as an administrative team, and I know you all believe as a board, was a good investment. And we hope to be able to pick up where we left off in the spring. But, right now, our focus is on getting our students and staff and our families back to school safe and healthy. Finally, I want to mention, we were awarded a $20,000 incentive grant, and I need to thank Trevor Lording, our IT, and Shane Feely, curriculum coordinator. They did a tremendous amount of work preparing for that incentive grant. Not every school got one. And so, I appreciate their work on it. One of the reasons we got that grant, it is for improving literacy and vertical alignment in reading and writing. And so, if you want to just mention Shane, just a brief kind of overview of what that will look like for our teachers in our district, that'd be great.
So, a few years ago, we embarked on the curriculum mapping project. The end goal was to ultimately be able to vertically align, make sure that everything was taught in the way that it should be taught. And so, the pandemic has caused us to have to reevaluate and prioritize the standards that we're teaching because we know that that nine weeks' loss could create some gaps that we're not fully aware of quite yet. So, we're going to partner with a group called the International Center for Leadership and Education, which is at Denver, and they will take us through a good framework and structure to prioritize those standards. And in the process of prioritizing those standards, we would vertically align those. So, all English teachers, the LA teachers would meet, and they would align their standards all the way up, which is something that we've wanted to do for quite some time. Didn't have a great framework and structure to carry that out. And we feel like we found that, and it will be paid for through this grant.
Thank you. Any questions? That's all I have.
Items of current business. Discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the Alba Public Schools' learning options for the school year 2021.
Just like with our returning to learn plan, to get our students and staff and families back into our buildings safely, our administrators have worked a lot of hours with people on a committee to come up with some different learning options that take into account our families in this kind of uncertain time. So, turn it over to Mr. Feely, let him walk you through some of that, and if you have any questions, please ask.
So, in the document, there are three options. The first option is the traditional classroom. And that means a couple of things in the unprecedented times. So, namely, we believe that there is no replacement for a great teacher in the classroom. So, the traditional classroom option is always the one that we would steer kids towards. In that traditional option, if there was a school closure, then we would go to a distance learning model for that traditional classroom. And we've been working on a plan that would govern that, that would have some unified expectations for teachers and grading, and a whole lot of other topics. In that option, the student remains a student of APS, or Alba Public Schools, and they would have all the immediate access to everything that they normally would as a traditional classroom student. Option two is the blended option. That would be online and onsite, and what that really references is something similar to an alternative ed program. And we had been working on a blended academy through some committee work for about the last year, and we just didn't quite have our mind wrapped around all the little details until the closure kind of forced us to come to grips with some of it. And so, that option is only for grades six through 12. It generally is going to be for grades six through 12 because of a staffing type of situation. And so, our alt-ed coordinator would help to coordinate that. We also have a couple of certified teachers that are in there when Mr. Gail's not in there. That would be English and math. And so, they can help address some of those learning gaps and issues with those students when they get stuck on something. Those students can still participate fully in extracurricular activities. We've been doing that. That's nothing new. We've had kids that have been in that program and still participated in athletics and other extracurriculars. So, the, any student that chooses option two goes through an intake process. There's, it's an application process, and then also would meet with a committee of teachers that govern that program. And in that, it's about counseling the student, is this truly what is best for the, for the student? So, there's a little bit of counseling there with the families. Option three is the full, the full virtual online experience. The student can stay at home. They still remain an Alba Public School student. They would work at home. And the reason that we created this option was that during this unprecedented time, we realized that there are some families that have high-risk members. Maybe grandma's raising a student, and that they're high-risk by that age category. And so, they may not want to send their student to school, but we don't want to lose that student. We don't want them to lose that educational opportunity. And so, the full virtual option is meant to meet that need. One of the things about this is that the student who chooses a full online option would not play athletics or be a part of extracurricular activities because that would sort of defeat the purpose of that isolation. So, once a student has made a choice for option three or option two, they are locked into that option for the remainder of the semester. Option one, on the other hand, is a little bit different. Let's say a student chooses the traditional classroom, and then we have a family member get sick. They could then choose to go online, and they would remain online for the rest of that semester. Now, the reason for those hard and fast rules is, we cannot ask, you know, our teachers to be jumping through multiple hoops and multiple preparations on a daily basis. So, for instance, if we asked a teacher to prepare for a traditional classroom, and then also prepare for online, then we've got them going too many directions where they're maybe not going to be able to do a good job neither. So, so the idea is, we're going to make a choice, and we're going to stick with that choice through the semester. If that choice needs to be reevaluated, then we can do that at the semester and switch back into a traditional classroom. So, what kind of questions do you guys see coming up, or challenges, roadblocks?
A question on option three, your third bullet, you and I visited before the meeting, but a supervising APS certified teacher, this is a student who would consider to be fully online and not participating in any extracurricular activities. Would that Alba Public School teacher be somebody that's already part of the option two plan? Or would that be somebody who has a regular classroom, and now I've got to go help this kid? I'm just asking, because I don't, where does that come in? How does that play out on responsibilities and commitments?
So, it's unlikely to be either of those options.
Okay.
So it's unlikely to be either of those options at this point.
Okay, alright.
The reason would be, we're waiting to see what enrollment looks like.
Okay.
We don't know how many are going to choose this option.
I know.
And so if we get enough kids that are coming out of, let's say, an elementary classroom, let's say twenty kids decide to go that route.
Option three?
Option three.
Okay.
Then maybe we reassign a teacher.
Okay, alright.
And so that would be their preparation, that would be their classroom.
And that's, I guess my question was, you get into, my place full, and I'm going to do one more thing, and now I'm not doing a service to anybody, because I'm exhausted, and I've got, so thank you, that explains that to me very much.
So as we get through enrollment, we're going to have a little better idea.
Sure, and right now, we don't know even what's going to happen. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yes.
If I start in option one, and I have, using the example, the family member is sick, and I have to switch to option three, will I no longer, will you take away my extracurricular?
That would be the path we would take, yeah, because if you're going to go online out of that risk, then it would defeat the purpose.
Can you switch over there for a little bit and come back? You said no.
That was not the intent, correct.
Okay. But if I had a family member that was sick, are you going to force me to go there?
Well, I don't know, that's a good question.
Well, I'm just saying, can you see how that would, I'm in the middle of fall, and I'm heavily involved in extracurricular option one, and a couple of my family members get sick.
Right. I think one of the things, too, so as we begin, as we go through this, one of the, I guess, tenets of what we're going to ask our teachers to do is to begin using Google Classroom and CSO from the outset, which are our online learning platforms that we used last year in our distance learning. And so I think that there will be some times when someone is gone for, maybe not an extended period, but for a few days, where they can work on that work through Google Classroom and CSO.
Say the flu.
Or sick, yes. And so I think that, you know, there's certainly going to be some things that come up like that, but I think it's the choice of that family. If they feel like that there's a risk there, and that they need another option, we want to provide that for them. But with that risk and with those options, there are some difficult choices that will have to be made.
So if we approve this as written, and there are significant modifications to it, are we going to bring it back every time we modify it, because there's?
I don't think our intent is to modify this once you approve it.
Okay, just work within the parameters.
I think that once we finish, complete our enrollment, and if we feel like there's something maybe unforeseen that we didn't pick up, then we could possibly do that in August, but I don't feel like, I feel confident in the plan that we have, and in the framework that this committee came up with, and I can't see us bringing this back unless enrollment showed us anything.
I think it's excellent. I think, thank you, I mean, I think, I know you've put a lot of work into it, but I can see that it could possibly, some of these might have to change.
Yeah. To speak to Mr. Hergo's comment about Google Classroom, and this is kind of a secondary topic that is related, is we're going to have teachers doing virtual days once a week to practice distance learning, and we want them to be able to use Google Classroom in a way that, let's say that we didn't have a pandemic going on, and we had kids that had to be gone for a baseball tournament or FFA convention, they would still be able to use Google Classroom to do their work and to continue to receive their instructions. So that is a possibility in your scenario, for a kid, maybe they're going out on a two-week quarantine, they could still receive that through traditional option one.
And that was my question, because in the event a family member becomes diagnosed, and they go, well, I need to be quarantined, because I was with them, but I don't want to lose everything for that fourteen days I would participate, because needless to say, I'm jeopardizing everyone's health, but I'm not giving everything up, after my fourteen days, when I might be tested again, and I'm clean, I could come back into option one.
Agreed, yes.
Okay. Well, I will tell you, as a committee member, and I don't know why my sound number's listed here and not everybody else, because I'm more concerned about, no, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, everybody can have their, no.
My bad.
This committee, we've met, gosh, a couple of times Zoom, before all the COVID hit, at least twice, if not three times, as an in-person group, so this has been an ongoing. Now, option three was something that was the curveball as of March 13th, but I would like to congratulate the leadership, because they have reached out, they have given us every opportunity to come back as committee members and say, where do you see the flaws? Where do you see the fly in the ointment? And I have called, and I've asked some questions, and it's been clarified, and so it's a scary time, and I know for parents it's going to be, but if I pick one, two, or three, well, in forty years of education, I've never had to face this. And, you know, we want to be as flexible as we can, and the students are the most prized possession we have, and we're here to serve them. But we've got to have a game plan, and I think, I would say thank you to the committee. Nothing's ever perfect, nothing's ever going to be, I mean, if it were, the State Department would have to come out with something and make us all adopt it. I think they're saying, local districts, you need to do what you need to do for your kids, but I think it's important that the public and the parents realize that this is a big deal, and it is in the kid's best interest, and we're trying to keep everyone safe and secure, and still be given an opportunity for a valued education, which I think we offer at Out of Public Schools. So thank you to your committee.
And I appreciate the questions y'all have, and we certainly haven't taken this responsibility lightly at all, and appreciate the committee, like Ms. Kane said, I think it's going to be a good thing. I think we're going to have a good year, and I think we're going to have a lot of traditional classroom, and I think that's the exciting part.
Yeah.
And so if there are no other questions or comments, I would recommend that we approve the learning options for the 2021 school year.
So move.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Feely.
Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following salary schedules and assignments for this week year 21.
Administrative salary schedule.
Okay, we can go, if you'd like, we can do all of it.
Teacher salary, support personnel salary, executive extra duty salary, and extra duty assignments.
Administrative salary schedule, there's been no change to that salary schedule for FY21. Our teacher salary schedule, the board has really honored our teachers for as long as I can remember with the additional five-year salary step, and so I would recommend that we continue to do that also, that's years 25 through 30, which is above our state minimum salary schedule. 10.3, there are no changes to our support personnel salary schedule. Our extra duty salary schedule, I want to thank Mrs. Kane and Mr. Hanson, we've spent a lot of time, and we've got more out in front of us to, as we continue to look at those assignments and that salary schedule. We brought that last week with changes that carry with them this week, so there is nothing new that you will see on our extra duty salary schedule. 10.2.5, our extra duty assignments. All of these extra duty assignments received the three and a half percent increase going into our FY21 school year. Some new assignments that we have so far, Misty Weisswerner, head cheerleading coach, Jordan Valava, assistant cheerleader, Dana Manning will be the La Club sponsor, Mindy White and Crystal Murrow will be the students' council sponsors. We have some assignments that we are still looking to fill, sixth grade girls' basketball, Out of High School baseball assistant, middle school assistant football, and middle school boys' track. And so we will probably, we will be bringing this back to you in August, hoping to finalize our extra duty assignment schedule. Any questions about the salary schedules? If there are, then I would recommend they're approved.
I would make the motion to re-accept 10.2.1, 10.2.2, 10.2.3, 10.2.4, and 10.2.5 as presented.
Second. Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
10.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an extended one-year bus lease for five 2018 71 passenger buses with Ross Transportation.
So we determined after, really back in April, consulting with Mr. Ellis and Mr. Burton, who maintenance many of our buses, not driving those buses that last nine weeks kept our mileage low, it allowed us to keep our buses, which was a concern with manufacturing, and if we tried to replace, would they be replaced? And so Ross has already sent some of their workers up here, our buses are maintained, our buses are ready to go for our new school year. This extends the lease one more year, and then we will start anew next year. So at this time, I would recommend that we approve the renewal for the bus lease for Ross Transportation.
Some move.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
10.4, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following service contracts. We all vote on all of them with one vote. Very routine. 10.4.1, Educational Based Services. 10.4.2, Jana Hickman. 10.4.3, Janet Eaton. 10.4.4, Precision Lab Testing Laboratories.
All of these contracts for FY21, we have used these services for the past few years. And so we'll start with Educational Based Services, that is our psychologist that we use on any of our student APs. Janet Hickman provides our OT services for students. Janet Eaton provides our physical therapy for a come-back student. And our Precision Testing Laboratory, that is our asbestos inspection that we have once a year, and if necessary, then they will help us with the removal if we need that. Any questions about these services that, or these contracts? There are none, I would recommend they're approved. I'll make the motion that we approve these four.
I'll second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
10.5, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following board policies as referenced.
Want to thank Mr. Hanson, Mr. Gordon again, for the time, we feel really good about the progress we've made with our board policy handling. We have got it almost updated, and we've worked our way through it, and feel really confident about these policies. These have all been vetted by the Oklahoma School Board Association and their attorneys. Some of these are new, but the majority of them are just updates to current policy. I'll give you a second to look through any of those, and of course, if you have any questions, you'd be happy to answer them. I might mention that if you look at EHBH, Alternative Education, and FDCR1 Attendance Policy Regulation, I need to thank our principals, because we sat down as a group together, and as we received guidance from the OSSBA, we also had to make sure that guidance tied in to the current situation that we're in, so that it would fit our students and our families and those policies, and our return to learning plan and our learning options all fit together, and they've done a good job. Any questions?
Please make the motion that we approve the board policies as referenced in 10.5.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
10.6, discussion with possible board action, vote to rescind the following board policies as referenced.
Again, this is just cleaning up that board policy manual. All of these board policies that I will be recommending to you to rescind are covered in other policies throughout our manual, or they're duplicate. So these are all vetted, this is part of that OSSBA policy review that was conducted by Julie Miller, they've all been vetted by the attorneys, and I would recommend that we rescind these policies as referenced. Make the motion that we approve 10.6.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
What's ring of new business? Signing of documents approved by earlier action, and a motion.
I'll make a motion to hear.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?